Day, March 5th. We have a meeting of the Lompoc City Council to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Sorry?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne. Here. Now, would you join me and stand? Pastor Bernie Federman will give our invocation tonight. But prior to that, I would ask for a moment of silence and in memory of the tragic young life that was lost last night here in Lompoc. Thank you. Pastor Federman.
Spirit of a living God, fall afresh on us. Our hearts are grieved at yet another senseless act of violence in our community. The name, a homicide, but we call it the needless loss of a young, beautiful, and precious life. We pray for the family and friends of this young, innocent girl. Protect their hearts, their souls, and their minds. We pray for her schoolmates and friends at Lompoc High School, her teachers, staff at the school. We ask you for grace and comfort to be upon them and upon our city. At the same time, we're grateful for the outpouring of not only prayers but support, encouragement, and generosity, and the compassionate work by our police and firefighters and our allied agencies. We ask that you help our detectives to find those responsible and that justice will be done. And we, at the same time, stand grateful tonight as we honor the dedicated work and leadership of our former police chief, Pat Walsh. And with gratitude to you, we pray for our new police chief, Joseph Mariani. I believe it was your will and purpose that he joined our community and has served faithfully as our police captain for the past three and a half years, and that it is your will and purpose that he would now become our new police chief. I believe the steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord, and I believe that Joseph Mariani is that good man. Order his steps, lead him and guide him, provide him with wisdom and insight and favor with this community that he leads. And for our city leaders, our upcoming workshops, we pray for your wisdom and for open hearts and open minds. We need your strength. The wells of our own resources easily run dry. We need your strength to fill us up, your strength to give us fresh creativity and resourcefulness, so fall afresh upon us. Cover and protect our mayor and our council and their families, our city manager, the leaders of our city, and every city employee and their families as well. And help us all to have the ability to recognize both our strengths and our weaknesses, and to listen deeply and to learn from one another. It is up to each of us to allow you to provide the strength we need to think clearly and to decide decisively for the good of our community now and for its future. Watch over those this night who protect and watch over us, and we stand here grateful for all your goodness and all your love. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, we would like to have the official penning ceremony for our newly appointed police chief, Joseph Mariani. Family, please join him. Is this everybody? Okay. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Joseph A. Mariani.
I, Joseph A. Mariani.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the laws and policies.
That I will support the laws and policies.
Of the city of Lompoc.
The city of Lompoc.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of police chief.
Of the office of police chief.
Of the city of Lompoc.
Of the city of Lompoc.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And now, Chief Mariani, a few words, please.
Thank you. There's always a comedian. Thank God. Thank you very much. I'm thrilled and honored and humbled to be here this evening, Madam Mayor, fellow city council members. Let me get my glasses on. If I can find them. Gosh. These hash marks mean something about my eyesight. I just want to say that. You know, 42 years ago, when I decided to become a police officer, never thought I would be here. But I'm so pleased and grateful for the opportunity that I've had to serve in public safety for 42 years. You know, the job of a police officer is a very challenging one, and I've witnessed that during my career. And for the last three and a half years, I had the opportunity to work with one of the finest men I've ever had the pleasure of serving with. A man who gave of his life daily, had a sense of compassion like I've never seen before. So I want to thank Pat Walsh because he made this possible. In recent days, I contemplated what I would say tonight in appreciation for this opportunity. There were many factors and reasons that played into making this decision, but last night, I realized why I chose to accept the position. At approximately 8:00 PM, I responded to a tragic incident and learned that one of the victims in a shooting had been fatally wounded. A 17-year-old girl, full of promise, whose life was ended way too soon. While at the scene, I saw members of our police department and fire department working diligently and tenaciously to conduct a thorough investigation in one of those situations that reflects the worst of humanity, but at the same time, they reflected the best. Several of my officers responded from home. Some were home with their families who were ill. Some had just walked through that door to have dinner. Some had just ended a shift of 12 hours and came back. That's why I want to lead the Lompoc Police Department, because every day, I get reminded of what it means to serve. And I'm so proud of them. I'm glad I'm having this opportunity. It's an emotional thing for me, but it should be. And I commit myself to doing the best to making this the safest city possible. You know, today, it rained, and rightfully so, because many tears have been shed in the last 24 hours, including mine. And I grieve, and I pray for that family, that no one else should have to suffer that kind of loss. But once again, I want to thank you all, and I promise to work as hard as I can and continue to do the best that I can and support the men and women of the Lompoc Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Chief Mariani, and again, thank you to our prior police chief, Walsh, for your commitment and for bringing us Captain Mariani, who's proudly stepped up to take on all of the changes and initiatives you've put in place and also take new steps to show the community how much he embraces it. Thank you both. Now, if I could have the representatives of the American Association of University Women join me at the podium. It's okay. We'll give her a little time to get up here. Give her a chance to get up. So you may be noticing that a few of the members of his family and law enforcement are stepping out of the room to take photos and share the time with family, so we'll take a little moment for that transition. And this proclamation is to celebrate Women's History Month. So, whereas the month of March 2019 has been declared Women's History Month, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created more fair and just society for all, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, now, therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Women's History Month. All right. Our next agenda item is our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For this one, I have a few items. We will have, and I want to reiterate, we have a goal-setting session this Saturday, March 9th, from 8:30 to noon here in the council chambers. The idea is to, it's designed to reaffirm, modify, delete, or add to the existing council goals. It's also setting actual, or the setting actual budget priorities. This will be coming at the next budget workshop, which is currently being scheduled. We also have, the state of the city presentation is going to be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. The mayor will be providing that presentation, and it will be Thursday, April 4th, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM at the Dewey Center. A press release is coming out. It's either out today, or it will be out tomorrow, and we'll have more information on how to attend that event. We also have two presentations tonight. One, I think it's a very exciting presentation from a group talking about the proposed space center near Ellen Hancock College property. We also then get into the financial portion of the city, and we'll hear from our finance director, as well as our external auditor from Glenn Burdette, on the final 20, year in 2018, results for our comprehensive annual financial report, or more commonly called the CAFR. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve or to Bob?
Or everybody. Okay. My name is Steve Frank. Mayor and council members, thanks so much for your, for your time. I represent Pale Blue Dot Ventures, and we have some quite, hopefully will be a quite interesting story to tell you tonight. I think a lot of you probably have seen the SpaceX launch of the Dragon capsule that happened with the Falcon Heavy on, on Saturday, launching the Dragon capsule to the ISS. It turns out that the YouTube downloads was the second biggest they've ever had. So it's, it's quite an interesting time. We're returning to the moon, and then we're going to go on to Mars, and that's all going to happen in our lifetime. But there's a new space race on, and if you look at how many satellites have been launched over the last, since 1958, it's about 8,000. That's going to triple, so over the next 10 years or so. So there's a lot of interesting things going on. It's driven by the new space, which is transportation, mining, and those kind of issues. So we'd like to talk about our mission, which is to entertain, inspire, and to educate. We really have a unique opportunity to, to build an entertainment and educational destination right here up the street, not far from where we stand. I know it's been tried several times, but we think that we have a compelling opportunity now, and now is the time to do that, to tell the story and advance the science and the story of space and space exploration. And we're not kidding when we want to, we have every intention of building a national treasure here in Lompoc. Thank you.
Exploring space is hot again. Audiences are lining up to experience the new reality of space travel and exploration. And the central coast of California is the next premier space exploration and entertainment destination. Over 13 million people live within a three-hour drive, and 1.5 million already visit popular locations only minutes from the coastal town of Lompoc. It's the closest place you can get to active launch sites at Vandenberg Air Force Base, where DOD, National Reconnaissance Office, SpaceX, United Launch Alliance, Orbital ATK, and NASA regularly launch polar orbit missions. But unlike its famous counterpart on the Florida coast, there are currently no purpose-built visitor centers or public viewing locations for launches. That's called an opportunity. In 1990, Voyager 1 looked back at Earth from a distance of 3.7 billion miles. As Carl Sagan described it, "Our tiny world appeared as a pale blue dot in the great expanse of space." Today, Pale Blue Dot Ventures has an opportunity to capitalize on the renewed public enthusiasm for space and the industry's dawn of a new era of space exploration and travel. Its experienced development team has decades of proven expertise and is poised to create the next great entertainment destination success, with a keen focus on blending immersive STEM learning experiences to advance the science and story of space exploration in a completely new kind of multi-day space exploration camp. So, as the U.S. continues to lead the way in space exploration and commercial space travel, with a new generation of spacecraft, missions, and opportunities for anyone to enter the final frontier, the time to get a front-row seat on the action is now.
That just says we're not selling any securities, but I skipped over one of the things. What we want to talk about, of course, is our mission and also with the team, and the team is led by Bob Allen, who's got over 40 years of experience for Disney. He'll go through his bona fides in just a second. And of course, we've got David and Kelly. I'll let them introduce themselves, but we've got a great team with a lot of experience, and Bob is really the creative director and the creative lead on this project, so I'll let him take it from here.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for having us. We're going to be drinking from a fire hose. We'll go pretty quick. We know you're busy tonight. We want to start with what we should start with, which is why would this be a good idea for Lompoc? So fundamentally, we see value creation across the spectrum up here. The primary one, of course, on everybody's mind is employment. Without getting too deep into the weeds, there are three specific constituents employment that apply to an enterprise like this. There is a construction phase, which is obviously, you know, high-wage, high-skill jobs. There's a longer-term, minutious hospitality industry phase that also, in this particular case, contains a pretty high quotient of office and technical on the educational side, as well as the management and leadership side. Next, there's a bed and sales tax impact. I've been prowling around in the California TOT statistics, and we think there's, there's quite a bit of revenue there. There's a direct tourism spend, again, from a statistical standpoint, just as an item of interest. In 2017, Santa Barbara County's per capita daily spend for tourism was $436, if we presume that that's double what we'd ever estimate. If we look at our baseline sniff test attendance of 300,000 a year for a stabilized operating year, it's about $66 million if we assume half of that spend. So we think there's a lot of direct spend, and a lot of that sticks to your ribs here in Lompoc. We would argue, and certainly can prove where we've done this kind of work before, there's tremendous brand value, a brand in yours, to Lompoc, if it becomes the home of this place. I'm not going to make up a name because I have no idea what to call it yet. And then, the last one, although not insignificant, is there's a land appreciation value, not just for the site itself, but for the contiguous lands around it. So we would argue there's a pretty good basket of value here to take about 80 acres of sort of pent-up value and begin to monetize it over the long term. So what we'd like to spend the rest of 10, 12 minutes on is how would we help you guys do that? Steve mentioned our team, so very quickly, our company, Ideas, spun out of the wall Disney Company. We've been a separate, private enterprise for the last 17 and a half years. We do experience and brand design. We're based in Orlando, Florida. My background, as Steve mentioned, is Disney and 42 years in the theme park industry. We have a strategic alliance partner in Orlando, Integrated Insight, also ex-Disney. They do all of our market analytics, revenue optimization, operations planning. This is a creative enterprise, but the creative is only valuable if it's grounded in real market reality, and that's why we like to work with Joni and her team. My colleague, David X-line, behind me, is going to talk in just a minute, but David is based in Irvine, California. David is our go-to design architect. We've worked on these kinds of projects together all over the world. So the way the enterprise kind of lays out is Steve is the fearless leader. He's the entrepreneur. You know, he didn't tell you his own background, but this is a guy who can fly a jet, do four kinds of engineering, and understands global finance at a level that would baffle almost all of us in the room. So he really does have the entrepreneurial perspective on leading this team. We met yesterday in Los Angeles with our group of financial and legal advisors, and suffice to say that they're very interested in the outcome of our presentation to you, and we feel very confident with their input that this project is fundamentally financeable. So there's the way our team lays out. We've got the creative disciplines on the ideas side. Joni's got market analysis, and of course, David and his sort of extended team of designers do the design roles. This fundamentally is a sound structure for any kind of destination entertainment development. It's not the operating company. It's the company that gets it designed, built, and delivered down. A delightful opportunity to specialize also in aerospace, aeronautics, and space as certain topics for some of the different themes that we've worked with. We've enjoyed working on Spaceport America. That's Virgin Galactic's base in, in New Mexico. We've worked to do Spaceport Sweden, north of the Arctic Circle. It's been a great project with Ideas, as well with Spaceport America. Some additional work with San Diego Air and Space Museum. We've done other projects with Lockheed Martin and Northrop Grumman. So we have built a fairly substantial body of work around the topic, so we're very excited about it. I did have an opportunity this afternoon to run out in the rain. I tromped around through the puddles to go up to the property, and it is an absolutely gorgeous piece of, of land. It has a very dramatic.
... of mine. I was a schoolteacher, a public schoolteacher in central Florida, and then moved into the corporate world, and my background is in educational technologies and instructional design. So our process works very much with the educators. I would love to work with the educators at all levels, from even pre-K through college level, to make sure that what we are building is going to be able to meet the needs, not only of the deed restrictions and requirements, but also the needs of the, the city education systems here, and also the county and beyond, because we hope that this will be, as we have said, a true asset to not, not just the city, but to the country. So we like to talk about the science of learning, but we also like to talk about fun. So we have a, we have coined a term that we like to make broccoli ice cream, that meaning that if you can put some, a little bit of broccoli in the ice cream and, and you disguise it well, then people will enjoy it. So, so goes learning. Yep, we want them to learn, but we also want them to have fun. There's going to be, hopefully, an asset that will have some formal learning, meaning you may be sitting down in a classroom and actually learning something which is degreed or certificate given at the end. Or we're going to do a lot of informal learning, where you're walking through, you're having fun, you're doing some great things, and you're learning along the way. So we know that science is fascinating. STEM training is really, all, everybody, it's kind of the rage now. Everybody's talking about STEM learning. I taught science, technology, and mathematics when I was in the field of education, and all of those are the things that make up engineering. So it's, it's a, it's a good fit for me in this particular project. We know, as I said, that we want to have kids and teachers of all levels, so the planning really starts with the, at the educators, and we want to start as young as we can possible because we know that getting that thought process in early is going to work. So I appreciate your time and look forward to serving in this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Come on, little machine. Okay. So we can wrap up here pretty quick. We have, frankly, a moment in time now that we would like to walk through. The PBDV core team, which is basically Stephen and I, have invested about a quarter million dollars in the project so far. We believe in it that much. So it's time to move down the road. As we hope we've demonstrated, and we're happy to follow up with any details you like, we believe strongly in our team. We have done this before. We have a deep, a deep experience and a deep methodology. It's very sober work. It's market-based, but we wouldn't be here if we didn't believe, from a legitimate data-driven perspective, that this would work. We have identified our capital sources. We have our, our legal team in place. We have our financial team in place. We're enjoying a continued robust economy in the U.S. and across the world, really. And the public interest in space, as Steve pointed out, is extraordinary. And to Kelly's point, you know, I remember the Apollo days. I'm a space nerd. I remember the Apollo days. The Shuttle, not so much. And once again, when SpaceX launches, you can't drive down the beeline freeway between Orlando and Cocoa Beach, which is fantastic. I'm just thrilled. I'm just thrilled that 200,000 people show up to watch rocket launches again. We've got that going on, and it's only going to build bigger, as I'm sure you know. So this is the process, and probably the key thing. We are very methodical in the way that we do this work, almost to the point of dogma. So you can see on the chart, that's where we are. It's Q1 of 2019. What we're going to be asking you for tonight is to consider the notion of entering into some kind of exclusive dealing period with us, not to make a deal with us, but to leave us some running room to have the right to come back to you when we have all the pieces in place to talk to you about making a deal. During that period of time, we will go and perform a concept and feasibility study, and I'm going to show you in a minute what those deliverables are. Presuming that that goes well, we come back, we present, we explain. We then have a full 25-year financial pro forma. We have our ducks in a row. We know what the concept is. We've got our market analytics. We move into the land agreement with the city. Once we complete that, we complete our project financing, we go through a schematic and DD process, and then on through construction documents, pre-opening and then opening. The timetable across the top is roughly accurate if you base it on typical approaches to these kinds of projects. Could it be shorter than that? Yeah, and it could also be longer than that. But that's a reasonable, middle-of-the-road assumption about the time it takes to do a project like this. We are extremely inclusive, both in the way we design and in the way we operate as a business. So our design work is called StoryJam. That starts here in Lompoc, and it's rooms full of mostly you. You know more about this place than we can ever learn. Yes, we know a lot of show business tricks, and we'll always bring those to the dance, but we want to spend a full day with a group of people who live here and understand this place, and another full day with Kelly and the educators. That's going to drive this whole process, and we're collaborative. We view the city of Lompoc as a business partner, not simply as some kind of a host. So we feel a responsibility to continue to report out, include, and milestone this project out as it falls out. So let me just speak to a little bit of the details on the concept and feasibility, which is our next phase. This is the part that most people, frankly, either gloss over or get wrong. So it's very methodical. We start with a market assessment. Yes, we know there's a lot of data out there. We prefer to get our own. So we're going to go find out what's there there, and we can do that. That's what our team does. Then we'll go into our collaborative concept design. We create a document called an Experience Design Plan. It's about 200 pages, and it's kind of the Magna Carta. It's kind of the constitution for the project. Everything from creative to financials to pro formas to attendance models. We're going to develop a brand, and then we're going to take the best parts of that, go back into that market, and test it again to make sure that the 10 things that are going to resonate with our market the most are the 10 things we put our time and effort against. Once we do that, we take our attendance model, and we build a thing called a Design Day Model, which is basically a mathematical way of saying, "Let's not build the church for Easter Sunday." You know, we have to be prudent about the way that we design and build this thing to keep it scaled properly. And then we'll do a final concept, a 25-year financial pro forma. Then we have our decision to proceed, and that's all the data we ever need to take to the banks and the capital folks. So that process, once it's greenlit, takes about 120 days to complete. So Steve, you want to come and wrap up?
Thanks, Bob. So our proposed next steps would be, number one is enter into a 12-month exclusive dealing period agreement with the city for the property, anticipating terms similar to what's been offered in the RFP or in the past. Number two, we complete our seed capital raise. We've already done Friends and Family, but then we do seed capital raise and finish the concept and feasibility phase. Number three, we present those results to the city and enter to negotiations to acquire the property, including all the capital requirements and the performance milestones which we negotiate with you. And then, number four, we greenlight the project and proceed with the development. So the 12-month period is, it kind of takes three to four months, I would think, to raise the initial seed capital, which is, we don't want to get tied down to too many exact numbers, but we're thinking 500 to 750,000. And then it takes about three to four months for Bob to do the concept and feasibility study, and then we look with holidays and stuff, that's why we came up with 12 months. So thanks very much. We're ready for your questions.
Thank you so very much. Just a reminder to council that this is a presentation so that we may ask questions of the presenters. This is not a time for discussion amongst council. If there is a desire for a council request, we can make one at the end and bring that back to council for full discussion as an agenda item. Anyone have any specific questions for the group? Councilmember Vega.
For Mr. Frank, Steve, and Bob, both of you, I think you probably answered. The 12-month period, you kind of described it kind of briefly here. So what 12, what is 12 months? It's going to give you all of these things, or it's going to give us enough time to provide the seed money? Or just, is that what you're looking? You're looking for some sort of preliminary commitment so that no one jumps ahead, so that you're not wasting your time?
Yeah, the only commitment we're looking for is a commitment not to do a deal with somebody else while we're getting this piece done. If we come back and it either won't work, or we don't come back, you're free to go. So the way the 12 months goes, and I actually think it might go a little quicker than that, but, you know, three to four months to raise the seed capital, and then four months to complete the work, and then there's some windage in there in case it takes a little longer, or it takes us a little longer to write it up and get it back to you. And that's the deliverable set up there on the screen of what we actually deliver for the concept and feasibility stage.
Thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? So you have referenced in it that you have reviewed the prior RFP, and so you are comfortable with those parameters of meeting some of those terms and being able to commit to those that we were seeking for experience, reliability, funding, and being able to potentially build an MOU that matches some of those terms.
Right. I know, you know, it tripped up on some of those earlier questions. We can answer a lot of those questions, but, you know, let's be very clear. We're, you know, we're a special purpose vehicle, which is an entity which will go out and find this capital. And frankly, if we can't find the capital in four months or so, it's probably, you know, it's probably just not going to work.
Okay.
I would just also add that, having reviewed the past documents, I didn't see anything in there that wasn't actually, frankly, prudent and expected.
Okay, great. Does council have a desire or a request? Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Trup, you've been dealing with this. Are you going to put this on an agenda later when staff has a chance to go through and discuss this?
Excuse me, that was my hope, is if there was enough council support that said, "Please move forward," I'll be then working with our city attorney and the Pale Blue Dot Group to come together with an MOU that then would get put with a staff report on an agenda and be brought back to the council to review it and approve it.
Councilmember Vega.
I would definitely support moving forward with a request on that level. 12-month commitment moving forward, and you go from there.
City Attorney.
I just want to clarify that the request from council tonight is to bring back an item to consider the next steps in this process. I want to make sure the council's not getting into the details of what those next steps might be or what the terms are, but we can bring back an item to discuss the next steps.
Okay.
Okay.
So you go with that. Councilmember Vega? Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll support that item, whatever it is, Jeff.
I fully support that. So do you need more than three, or are we...
I think three's good, and I'll definitely be in touch with the group.
Thank you very much for making a wonderful presentation, and thank you, Mr. Frank, for continuing to endeavor into potentially providing us with a space museum and activity center.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We don't call it a museum because we can't raise any money for a museum. But thank you very much for your support, your longstanding support. I've been coming here for, I think, my wife told me, since 2014, 15. So it's been a long process, and we really want to build something quite special. And we've got our heads down, and we look forward to working with you and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
So we have, our next presentation is going to be with Dean Albro. He's our new Finance Director, or Management Services Director, and he's going to be presenting the fiscal year 2018 audit to you.
Thank you. It's pretty exciting being the finance guy to see something that could generate revenues, huh?
Councilmember Mosby, you have a question?
Real quick, do you have any music to go along with?
I don't know if I can. I know this is pretty exciting to me, though. Matter of fact, I think this is probably the most important document that we put out as the Finance Division. It's a snapshot of where we are on June 30th. I know you guys have already got a copy of this. I know you've all read it, and it's available online if anybody else wants to read it, too. I just wanted to do a real quick highlight of some of the things. One of the things I want to talk about on page 14 is our Certificate of Achievement and Financial Excellence. I'm very proud of that. Took a lot of work. And I want to talk a little bit about what that means. One thing is, there's a big checklist that we have to go through, so it kind of gives us an opportunity to standardize this document so you can compare it to other cities. Another thing is, there's a stat section in the back where you can get a lot of information about this city and make better decisions while you sit on the dais. There's a lot of attention to the general fund that we did lose, 545, we had a deficit. But I wanted to bring some attention to the utility side. Every single one of our utilities had a positive net position, so I wanted to make sure you know that we're doing good. It's, you know, we've got some work to do, but we're doing good. Tonight, we're very lucky. We have Erin Nagel with Glenn Burdette. Erin has been the manager in charge to help us do this document. She's now our principal. She goes through and makes sure that we have everything in the right order. She's also been very instrumental for us to get this award, and she's going to talk a little bit about the audit process, and I thank you for coming.
Steve, it's really hard to follow up a really interesting outer space presentation and talk about numbers, but as Dean said, my name's Erin Nagel. I'm a partner with Glenn Burdette, and we've been working on the audit for a few years. And my goal today is to talk about, one, the audit and the audit process, and, two, point out just some key things in the CAFR that are new from last year or different so that you can review those items. The audit process is really two phases. Well, first of all, we're the independent CPAs, so third-party, we're CPAs. We sign the audit report, and we come in a couple times a year, so we perform two different sections of the audit. The first phase is we come and we really look at internal controls. We look at processes and how things are done. We look at different laws and compliance requirements related to those processes, specifically federal funds that you get, and that's called a single audit. We tested two major programs out here this year. One was related to transit. The other was related to CDBG, and those programs rotate every year. We follow guidelines on how to select them, so there isn't any, you know, surprise on what we're picking. We come out again in the fall, and we substantively test then all the numbers that you're seeing in the basic financial statements. We do that in a variety of ways. We look at different things in different funds. We don't test every dollar, but we do focus on large dollar amounts, large transactions. We focus on new things. We look at different funds in different ways every year. The results of the audit are that we have a clean audit opinion. It's called an unqualified audit opinion. That is on page 19 through 21 in the CAFR, in the basic financial statements. A few things that I wanted to point out, Dean didn't mention it, but the time and effort that goes into preparing this, there's a management discussion and analysis section that's very in-depth, and that gives a really good overview of, and kind of a flavor and context of the current year CAFR and situation and things that are important to look at and see. Two things that I wanted to point out in the CAFR this year that's new, one is implementation of a new accounting pronouncement. And under, it's called GASB Statement Number 75, and it relates to other post-employment benefits. And similar to what happened about four or five years ago with pensions, now the other post-employment benefits have now come onto the financial statements. That doesn't mean it's new. That benefit has always been there. It's just accounted for differently now, and the primary, I guess, focus on that new pronouncement is that it brought the liability onto the balance sheet. It provided a lot more meat in the footnote, and that footnote is note number six? Lost that. Note number seven on page, it starts on page 112. And it's very similar to the pension footnote. It's very similar to the pension liability in that it's used to be accounted for as a pay-as-you-go, and now the full unfunded or full liability is showing on the balance sheet. The other big thing that is new in the financial statements and the footnotes is related to the bond refunding, which everybody is aware of, but that is something that was different in the financial statements. It shows in note five, that shows all the bond refunding that happened. You know, as Dean mentioned, GFOA has a Certificate of Financial Excellence that's now been in the CAFR for two years. I think that's a very big accomplishment. There is also the statistical section in the back if you really want to dive into those numbers and get a better feel for those. The last thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to say thanks to Dean and Brad, Bob and Melinda, who worked through the audit at the same time as implementing the new ERP system, and we found that that was a very large daunting task that they did well. I know that's still ongoing, and so we appreciate the hard work they put into completing this so that we could do our job on the audit opinion. So do you have any questions for me on the CAFR?
Councilmember Mosby.
I remember when we read one of these, first one of these, I remember there was a number of deficiencies. One was about the Abacus that they were having to use in the back.
Yes.
You know, it's nice to see, I mean, that you're able to get through. Was it easier for you to...
Yes, I know that they still are using a lot of, no more Abacus, but maybe some Excel spreadsheets as it transitions into a more modern and technological, up-to-date system that really makes the data management a lot more easier to handle and read. Things still do happen when you have those manual Excel spreadsheets, and they are transitioning away to that, or away from that, I should say, and it's getting cleaner.
Coming a long way, right?
It has come a long way.
One of the things, us as a council, you don't have a lot of ribbon cuttings when you go in and you buy a computing system out here. I think that's one of the reasons why it didn't really, but, you know, we dug in deep and we did something we don't get any kudos for. There's no parades for the new computer, but it's nice to see that, and no deficiencies, right?
Right. We do have some things that we've found, but they're not, they're more of accounting changes or corrections that we did have in the financial statements. We did summarize them in a footnote related to, I believe it was, just the way that some developer fees were accounted for, not in a wrong way, but that they had been on the balance sheet as a liability, and it should have been revenue. So it's nothing that wasn't there. It was all there and accounted for. So some things that we have made changes for so that they won't happen in the future.
So they did good, right?
Yes, they did good.
All right, good job.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions for our consultant or for staff? Thank you for all the hard work, and yes, we do appreciate their juggling between implementing the new software and taking care of the audit. So thank you for your patience with them and assisting in it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor? Can I, I just want to add one more. Having done CAFRs for many, many, many years, and it is tough. One, it's tough to just get through it. Two, it's tough to get the award. It's a very prestigious award. Takes a lot of time. Having gone through what Dean and Brad have gone through of trying to do the year-end, just trying to do your regular business, and put in charge of a brand-new finance system, when they don't talk to each other at all, you're recreating the whole wheel. It is extremely time-consuming. You almost want to shoot yourself at times because you don't know if you're ever going to get through with it. So to get to this point where almost all of it is up and running and done in such a well-run fashion, I just wanted to give my congratulations, having experienced the pain that they had to go through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional information for the city manager report this evening?
That was the last one. Thank you.
Okay, great. Before we move on, I just want to remind the public who's in attendance here, we do have a vaulted ceiling, and the rain can be heard. We also can hear what is being said in the back of the room. So if you're going to have personal conversations, please... personal conversations, please step outside or refrain, because it does create an overlay and difficult to hear some of the presentations even with microphones. So, I just appreciate that respect for those in attendance to keep the conversation at a minimum or take it outside despite the bad weather. Thank you so very much for that. We'll move back to public comment on the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items considered to be routine and to be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. If anyone has a public comment on the consent calendar, you have three minutes, please feel free to step forward and make your comments. Seeing no one rise, I will close the consent calendar public comment and return it to council. Is there a desire by any council member to pull an item or any questions for staff regarding an item? Councilmember Mosby?
I just had a quick question on the, on the water treatment plant issue. Number three.
I don't see our Utilities Director here.
Brad is right behind you.
Oh, there he is. Okay. I know, in the original design of the, of the water facility, you know, they acquired that whole chunk of land, part of it was ended being sold off for the library, and then they crossed a little ditch there, they also had a couple, they were ponds originally designed for part of the component of the plant, I believe they only used it once, but with having something like this going on, is there something we should look into doing with those ponds in the back, or are they no longer designed of the plant?
I can't answer that, but I do know that when they put the dewatering facility in, they really didn't need those anymore. The only thing that happened when the dewatering system broke effectively is they got behind. And so, once that dewatering system went in place, they're very adequately sourced with what the ponds they have. And in addition to that, in the weekly report, you'll notice that the per gallons per day is below 50 gallons per person. So, the plant's actually around 3 million gallons a day, so it's very, very low compared to historical averages. So, that right there will probably make it that we don't need to even consider expanding beyond what we currently are using with the dewatering systems.
And I know things change over time, you know, 50 years ago when they did that, so I was just wondering if that's something that's a...
Well, the plan was to have a lot more area for more ponds as we grew more ponds, but then it got built around, and that land that's on the other side of the drain is a little bit harder to get to, so it's, the dewatering system that was put in place several years ago is kind of taking care of that. This was unexpected, and the length of time that it was out of service was unexpected as well, so...
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
A question on item two. It says in the staff report that if we go ahead and, you know, terminate the state of emergency with the riverbed, that it will not hinder us in our ability to seek reimbursement. Is there any movement on reimbursement, or is this just going to go away now silently?
It's, well, it's not going away silently, but it does not, because we've finished what we need to do at this point, so because we have the, from the first time to this last time, that's what we're still trying to get, certain members of our county to contribute. We're working with the other groups within the state and possibly try and, even with FEMA, to do it, that FEMA one might be a little harder for them to grasp where we were preemptive, rather than waiting for an emergency, we preempted that part of it. And sometimes it doesn't fit their rulebook, so we're still trying to work towards those. So, it doesn't, doesn't prevent us from going backwards, it's just the going forward.
And no word from the state on this either?
No, they, I'm still trying. I'm knocking on doors, I won't give up.
Councilmember Cordova?
So, in the termination of the local emergency adoption, does that mean, though, that we will still at least monitor it, or that our police department will continue to make sure that that area is safe? I realize that even with the weather that we're having, we really did it just in the nick of time, I think, otherwise we would have really had a disaster, but I just want to know if we're going to continue to...
Yes, the goal is for the officers to continue monitoring, come the next budget cycle. I know some of the requests that have already started to come in would be to create a team that works in the riverbed itself. Right now, we'll have to pull from different areas around the city to have, you know, usually two, we've gone with one, but two's the safer way to go down there if you're having to do some kind of police activity down there. So, they are doing it now, having a squad, which will come forward in the budget, because it'll be the actual, the group that would go down there, either two in and two out, but also the cost annually to continue to keep that brush cleaned upward, so that when the police are down there, they can actually see along the riverbank rather than where it had been grown completely down for many decades.
Councilmember Vega?
Jim, it seems that the state of this local emergency was meant to be a humanitarian effort. I think it's so noted that we were doing it because there were people down there that couldn't fend for themselves, and there were things that were going on in crime that was created in the riverbed. So, on that basis, I think we ran faster than the partners that we thought were going to partner up with us, so I think in the reality of everything, we might as well just say it. The county never thought and brought it to a level of importance that they wanted to contribute with the funding-wise, they sent people for support, but they didn't want to come up with any money. So, I think that on the, you know, sometimes when you run faster than the partnership, it should be so noted that they weren't very good partners up to this point, as far as deeming a local emergency, an emergency within the city-county, or within the Santa Barbara County.
Yeah, I would, I would say we're, our partnerships with any of the groups has not yet come to fruition, and that's why I'm still knocking on the doors. We have three different invoice, three different invoices that are going down to the county, or they might, I have to double-check, they should be already sent down. One is for the Triage Center, one is for personnel of our own personnel cleaning up the, meaning the police that have gone down there, and then the final piece is the physical cleanup of all the trash and material and whatnot, so we'll have three different invoices that have gone down. Have not heard anything yet back from them. The Triage Center was the one item that they said they would share a cost, they had agreed initially to share the cost on that. My assumption was, that was just the beginning stage of sharing the cost of the cleanup. The state, I'm still trying to find, now that we get to the state, now you're talking bigger than even the feds, it's even larger, on which doors am I supposed to be knocking on, but I am...
Gotcha, and I thank you, sir, I think it was a great effort, I just think that the Triage Center, even though there was help there, it wasn't noted that on the larger side of funding, we didn't get enough help, because it sounds like no one's responding and no one's throwing in. On the other hand, Councilmember Cordova mentioned about the local emergency and the fact that it's even more now to our benefit to make sure that that doesn't repeat itself and happen again, so I think the money that's being spent down there, to make sure it's clear, I hope that it's a longstanding effort instead of a short-term.
And it will be ongoing, I mean, there are, we get reports of seeing someone that's camped back down there, and so we do have to make this an ongoing piece of work, because if we let it go for any period of time, it's going to cost the city that much more, just like it did this last cleanup. So, the faster we can get out there to make these cleanups, the less expensive it'll be.
And I think with anything regarding that particular issue, we should make sure that we're coming up with solutions, you know, instead of just Band-Aids, so to speak, as some people have mentioned on public comment, so it's not going to get, go somewhere else, you know, here within this community. And on the other note, thank you, and I'd like to also make a council request that we recommend, I recommend that we accept consent calendar as written.
Your motion is that we accept the consent calendar as written?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Five, zero, passes. And now, there are no staff presentation announcements or requests. And oral communication, this is regarding city matters, you have three minutes, it can be an agendized item, or it can be in any manner you'd like within the city purvey to discuss.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. The city council meeting videos are still buried on the site. Please promote transparency and return the videos to the easily accessed format in place prior to the installation of our new leadership. Review and changes to city zoning have been under consideration for years. Why? What's the roadblock? Have you requested so much input from local businesses and citizens that the department has become overwhelmed? If not, if this delay is due to internal machinations, experience suggests complexity serves the government, not citizens or private businesses. Please investigate. I have recently been made aware of a study by the National Academy of Medicine 2017, it's available online, on the health effects of recreational and therapeutic cannabis use. I'll quote from the study. Chapter 11, psychosocial conclusions. There is moderate evidence of an association between cannabis use and impairment of the cognitive domains of learning, memory, and attention. Chapter 12, conclusions, mental health. There is substantial, that's huge, substantial evidence of an association between cannabis use and the development of schizophrenia or other psychoses. Marijuana use also is a significant factor for violence. How many years were devoted to the study of effects of cannabis on our small town? We sorely lack services for the mentally ill among us presently. It really breaks my heart to see the people that are sick homeless on our streets. Apparently, the cabal determined to destroy California and eliminate the middle class has created the gathering storm of mental illness and violence on the cannabis use horizon. Some on the dais promoted cannabis in Lompoc as a main campaign for their platform. Please inform citizens of your plans to redress this self-inflicted looming disaster.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of our community, mayor, city council. I'm really glad to see that the city is still interested in having a space center built here in our community. I continue to be a proponent of the California Space Center envisioned and proposed by Eva Blaisdell. Eva has never left the community, she's, we met when she was promoting the California Space Center, and she volunteered her time with me and my classes, sharing her time, expertise, and finances with my students at Lompoc High School. Since then, we have founded the Lady Rocket Foundation, and we're continuing to work with the youth here in Lompoc and globally. The current status of the California Space Center is that it is still active and growing. One proponent, or one portion of our space center that is not mentioned in this other idea is the Commercial Space Business Center, where we're bringing space business commercially here to Lompoc. Part of what we're doing right now, too, is working on training with our local community and bringing, training our community to have the IT jobs here on, out on base. I'm working on that. Currently, right now, the status with the space center, we are working with, negotiating for some property in downtown Los Angeles. Because of the termination of the ENA, it made it very difficult to find people willing to invest in Lompoc because of the negative publicity and the things that have been happening in our planning, that previously were happening in our planning center, our planning department. But we do have people who are willing to finance in Los Angeles, and with that, we want to bring some of that money here and continue in Lompoc. I would like to request that before you pursue an ENA with pale blue dot, that you would take the opportunity to speak with myself and with Eva Blaisdell, and we will update you on what we're working on and our progress and plans. Do note that Steve Frank was a part of our original group, and he was in charge of finding the financing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. If I find my little paper? There you go, Stacy. Ralph Harmon, I'm the current president of the Lompoc Firefighters Foundation, and I'm here tonight just to pass these flyers out to you, let everybody know that our hoedown is coming on March 23rd. We hope to have lots of fun that night, and we hope all of you can attend. I can tell you now that we have many, many donations that have come in, and probably this year, it's probably a wider selection than I've ever seen. We have things from zip lines in Northern California to hunting package in New Zealand. So, it's just a wild assortment of items that will be both live auctions and silent auctions. Music will be provided by Mike Day and his band, and American Hosts will be doing the buffet-style dinner, so we hope you all can come and have a good time with us, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I better lower this. Hello, my name is Lupe Montero. I'm a real estate agent here in Lompoc, and I am requesting and asking that if you can help us with the local swap meet. I grew up with a swap meet, I have members here from previous swap meet here that left Lompoc to work in Nipomo in Santa Barbara. I believe I can manage it, my background is HR. Currently, I'm doing real estate, and I would dedicate myself Saturdays to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, fellow community members. My name is Anthony Hudley, and I am both a local Lompoc resident and the president for your Lompoc Firefighters Union Local 1906. I'm here before you tonight to address the budget tool that is on the city's website for this Saturday's budget workshop. On behalf of the Lompoc firefighters, we are all very concerned, sorry, we are all very concerned in both of the inaccuracies of the information tab narratives and the fiscal numbers. Decisions should not be made until the tool we are using is corrected, updated, and revisited by our city leadership, department heads, and the public. These are important times for all of us, and working on documents that reflect accurate fiscal outcomes and a clear narrative on said outcomes cannot be overemphasized. In conclusion, myself and other firefighters from the union will be here at the Saturday's budget workshop, and we welcome any questions related to your fire department, as we want to be transparent with all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, excuse me, a little over four years ago, the swap meet was shut down. Everybody has a reason, but it was a bad, bad thing for the city. We lost all of, we had 75 small businesses that all had business license, and it's a shame, because, you know, we brought in probably 1,000 to 2,000 people from either community and around the world, come to see how the Lompoc swap meet was run. It was ran very well, and we tried to do a good job, but things were put up against us that we couldn't control. us that we couldn't control. And we've been trying for the last four years to get it reopened. Every time somebody else would say, yeah, we're going to do it, it never got brought up. So I was waiting for the new people to come in, so we could see if we could get Lompoc back on track again and get the tourism back here. We had a lot of tourism, we had a lot of money, we had taxes being paid, business licenses being bought. Everybody, this is, the swap meets are 24-hour days, seven day a week, to make sure that everybody is treated fairly. We've had a lot of homeless that couldn't pay. We took them in, we let them sell what they could, so they could eat. So we're, again, we're, are trying to get the swap meet started, and I have talked to a few of the council members to see what the feedback would be and see what we really need to do, because I don't know what to do anymore. But if we can, we need to get it back for the families and for the city. And I thank your time. I appreciate your time very much, and I need feedback. We need this for the, for the, for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment, and before we continue on the agenda, our city manager, I believe you would like to clarify some information.
No, and there is, we're making some changes for the budget model. We're trying to update that, but actually, we won't be just using the budget model this weekend. I just want to make sure that's going to be coming at another workshop, which we haven't yet scheduled. So there is more time for people. The budget meeting, if you will, it's really a goal-setting session. What are the overreaching goals that the council wants to do? Do they want to just reaffirm? Do they want to change, add, subtract? That's what we'll be doing Saturday. The next step will be taking the goals, working them down to prioritizations within those goals. If it was, you know, maintain city assets, then what does that mean? Then we'll take it down another level, and how does that eventually fit into the budget? So it won't be discussed this weekend. That will be at another, another time.
Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is appointments. We have an application for the Economic Development Committee for an associate position ending February 2020, and we have an applicant, Elaine Weber. I will entertain a motion for appointment. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that we appoint Elaine Weber to the Economic Development Committee for a term out to 2020.
I'll give her a second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And then that passes 5-0. Welcome Elaine Weber to the Economic Development Committee. Council Quest, item five, introduction of ordinance number 1666, parentheses, 19, to prohibit overnight parking on Cordoba Avenue and Aviation Drive. Provide for the creation of parking permit programs for restricted parking zones, and to create an exception to the safe parking ordinance to comply with Martin v. City of Boise. Adoption of resolution number 6243, parentheses, 19, to create a permit parking program on Aviation Drive and Cordoba Avenue, requested by Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Cordoba, and I see our city attorney Jeff Malave will do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We are here tonight, like you said, at the request of two council members, Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Cordova, who requested that this item come back. This item is to discuss restrictions on parking on Aviation Drive and Cordoba in the north part of town. On these two streets, the city has experienced some nuisance issues and other adverse impacts from, resulting from the parking of vehicles on those two streets. Since January of 2016, there have been 195 police contacts for various crimes in the 800 to 1,000 block of Aviation and the 800 block of Cordoba. The majority of these contacts are for enforcement of the city's existing rule that no one may park in one space for more than 72 hours. But there have been other calls within that 195 calls for things, including unlicensed and suspended license drivers, leaking sewage on the ground, dumping of trash, petty thefts, domestic violence, violations of restraining orders, parole violations, vehicle fires, warrant arrests, and suicidal subjects. In addition, most of the vehicles that do park on those streets are in effect parking there for much longer than 72 hours, because under the vehicle code, if they move their car just a couple of inches, that takes away our authority to cite them for being there longer than 72 hours, because they are technically not in exactly the same place. So what this ordinance would do is it would prohibit parking of all vehicles on those two streets on Aviation and Cordoba between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM the next The ordinance would not be enforced until the city puts signs up notifying the public on those two streets that there is that prohibition on parking overnight. The second thing that the ordinance does at the request of Councilmember Mosby a few meetings ago is to amend our ordinance so that the city council is allowed to create permit parking programs anywhere in the city where parking is restricted or prohibited. And what that ordinance does is it allows anywhere where parking is restricted or prohibited for the council to adopt a program by resolution, so that the residents of adjacent homes, the employees of adjacent businesses, or members of other groups designated by the council can park on those streets if they receive, apply for and receive a permit from the city. The third thing that staff is recommending tonight is to not only adopt that ordinance that allows the council, allows the council to create parking permit programs in certain areas, but also to adopt a resolution that creates a parking permit program for the Aviation and Cordoba streets. That program is going, the one that we've included in the packet, is going to allow any business that's operating adjacent to those two streets, or any business that owns property adjacent to those two streets, to come to City Hall and to request as many parking permits as is needed for its business purposes to park on those two streets. Now, the main reason for this parking permit program on those two streets is due to the Chumash Casino that has an employee parking lot just south of Aviation, and at times, casino operates 24 hours a day. So at times, the overflow from that parking lot does go on to Aviation. So presumably, the Chumash Casino would apply under this parking permit program for as many permits as needed for their employees, and they would distribute them appropriately. We do have some rules that we're adopting related to the parking permit program. First of all, the ordinance allows the council to set a fee for each permit. We're not adopting any fee tonight, but the ordinance does allow the council to adopt a fee in the future, if the council ever chose to. Like I said, the business owners that get permits are allowed to distribute them to their employees or to their patrons or guests of their business as they see fit, but we do have rules in there that say that no holder of a permit is allowed to sell the permits or even to give them to any other person. And we also have a rule that is, it is illegal under our ordinance for any person to use a permit to park on Aviation or Cordoba if they are not related or affiliated with the business that received the permit in the first place. Finally, this item tonight has an unrelated cleanup action that we're asking the council to approve, which is an amendment to the safe parking ordinance that was adopted a while ago now. It's in chapter 10 dot 30 of the municipal code. Last year, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decided a case called Martin versus City of Boise that requires us to add an exemption to our safe parking ordinance. So the safe parking ordinance prohibits anyone from using a vehicle for a residential purpose, such as sleeping, on any street in the city, period, right now. But what the new Ninth Circuit case held is that a city is not allowed to cite someone for sleeping on public property if there is no alternative place in the city or near the city for that person to sleep. So something like an available bed in a homeless shelter or a safe parking program area, which our city has not yet adopted. So what our recommended amendment to the ordinance tonight would be is to add an exemption that says the safe parking ordinance, the ban on using a vehicle for residential purposes on any street in the city, does not apply, and the police cannot cite someone for that unless there is an available bed in a homeless shelter or an available spot in a safe parking lot in or within one mile of the city limits. Now, that exemption to, or exception to the safe parking ordinance is not going to prevent the police department from enforcing the overnight ban on Aviation and Cordoba, because one is a ban on residential use of vehicles, and the other is a parking restriction that the Ninth Circuit did not require us to amend or did not limit the city's ability to regulate parking on city streets. So the staff recommendation tonight is to adopt the ordinance 166619, to prohibit overnight parking from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM on Cordoba Avenue and Aviation Drive, to create the parking permit program, and to amend our code to allow for the creation of parking permit programs, and to adopt the amendment to the safe parking ordinance to comply with Martin versus City of Boise. Those, all of those actions will be completed by introducing ordinance number 1666 and resolution number 6243. With that, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, I think the concern from the public, as far as public comment, is Cordoba is a, having the restriction on Cordoba is an automatic. We need that done. The concern is that if we do Cordoba and Aviation Drive, and the public comment was, is this just a Band-Aid, and we're not going to be able to control where else the people park, unless you're telling me that this permit process that's also incorporated into this is going to solve that, that issue. My concern is going to be that if we do ban both streets with permit parking, are they going to end up in Walmart Shopping Center or Foods Co. Shopping Center and affect our business district, because we do not have an area yet for a safe parking program? And in essence, has there been any complaints from the Chumash on Aviation Drive?
As to whether we've had complaints from Chumash about Aviation Drive, I don't have those facts, but we do have Officer Martin from the Police Department here, who might be able to answer factual questions about what's going on on Aviation and Cordoba.
That would be great. Thank you.
And then while he's coming up, on the issue about whether people and vehicles will be able to park on other streets in town, yes, they will, because as long as there's no other restriction on those streets in town, like, they can park on the street if it's not a red zone or not another restricted parking zone.
Thank you.
In regards to the Chumash, I'm not aware of any complaints from them. This area is heavily parked, and these people are very aware of California parking laws. Our CSO, our community service officer that handles that portion of the job, is out there every day, multiple times in the day, addressing issues out there. It's a challenge, but if, if we continue down the road that we're going with the California vehicle code section that we're using to enforce it, we're going to play this cat and mouse game of inches, quite honestly. So in regards to your question about Chumash, I have not heard of anything, but this is a, a problem area both on Cordoba and Aviation.
If I could reference Officer Martin, I mean, we, we're going to have a problem somewhere else. We're, we're solving a problem here for Denmat and the areas around there, because that is their main access and entrance, and the people that are roaming around there, I mean, they shouldn't be around there. So I guess my question is, are we creating more of a problem by keeping Aviation Drive as part of it until we actually find a solution to this, or is this kind of a never-ending kind of problem?
I can't look into the future and say this is not going to cause what you're in fear of, but at the same time, by not taking any actions on it and going, doing what we've done in the past up to date, it's becoming more of a problem for those streets because of the numerous vehicles that are parking there and the gray water issues and all the things that the city attorney has addressed in regards to the calls for service. And then your concern is, as the city wants to grow and bring in new businesses down into the Aviation area, if you're sending somebody in to check out that area and all you see is all these vehicles parked down there, they're, they're just not going to stop, they're going to keep going. So those, that'd be one of the concerns. We've, we're down there every day, and we've got to do something.
But you're going to be somewhere every day. I mean, because these guys are going to disperse, and I'm just worried about the Band-Aid, you know, concerned that they're going to go to Laurel Avenue, they're going to go to V Street, they're going to go somewhere. So the problem's going to be, your, your calls are going to be more global than just isolated one area.
Again, Councilmember, I, I can't look in the future, but I would say that taking action, giving us more tools in our tool belt to help keep the community from experiencing those parking issues wherever they are, is probably the right direction, in my opinion. That's up for the council to decide, but it is a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosi.
Would you say that it's safe to say that this is kind of like a first step, kind of a warning shot, saying, hey, we're initiating this, and it'd probably be a good idea to step into this so we can see how it's working and kind of putting out that, that something else is coming up next?
I think what we would do is, if we address this the same way that we did with the residents in the riverbed that, that we had to deal with, where we're going out and we're saying, hey, this is coming, and we are going to start enforcing these parking violations in a different way than we have in the past, and we need to help work through this problem and get you into a better living condition. I think that's a great way of going about it. We've seen that it's already worked in the riverbed, and I think we can apply that same methodology into addressing it for the parking problems in those areas.
I think it's important to understand that we plan on bringing in potentially a safe parking component. This is just a first step, correct? And then we're going to, so hopefully, we can get some people to transition.
And, and we saw in that experience in the riverbed where we have people that are coming outside of our community that are taking advantage of that situation, and when we start taking action, they've, they leave the, the area and the problem ends for some of these people.
The city manager.
City manager, please.
So we, we lost the three people that were working on safe parking. They've moved on. So we're trying to at least get one person back in, and as soon as we can hire that person, this will be one of their, if not first, one of their first top priorities to finish this project up. Just before Kristy left, she was getting close, but after losing Laura, Kristy, and Teresa, it's sort of been on hold at the moment. But as soon as we can get that new, new person in, we definitely want to get this done. So then all of this will align, and then we have everybody being able to monitor and enforce the different codes that we have.
One more question for the city attorney. In section two of the ordinance that we have in there, it says the issuance of a parking permit shall be contingent upon payment of a fee established by resolution of the City Council. So generally, we have something in there that says shall, that means we're going to have to do it. So would it affect us if we remove that portion?
Well, if the council has not yet adopted a fee, even though it says shall, we can't charge any fees. So even though that's in there, we won't be charging fees until the council adopts a fee, but if you were to take it out and the council wanted to adopt a fee later, we could always add that back in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
My question for Officer Martin, if that would. Is there any criminal activity as far as people that are, that are known to have a little background that are living out there on Aviation Drive? I know you guys are getting calls for frivolous calls, maybe health and safety, and maybe just vehicle complaints, but I mean, is there any criminal element out there that we just vehicle complaints, but I mean, is there any criminal element out there that we know of?
Yes, we've had criminal, we have domestic violence issues that exist inside of some of the campers that are parked there. We're aware of narcotics activity that's taking place in some of those, but the problem for law enforcement is that that's somebody's home and without a search warrant, if they tell us leave, you're not coming in, then there's nothing we can do until we get a search warrant to go in and deal with that. So, and, you know, with our resources, it's really hard for us to just park somebody down there and watch everything that's going on. We'd love to.
Yeah, thank you. And I think one more question here would be, we've heard complaints of unregistered vehicles out there. You guys are handcuffed, so to speak, on any movement there? I mean, does that, are you able to tow those vehicles off or impound them or is there a law that says you can't because there's someone living in these units?
No, if we're, and we are on top of the actual registration aspect of any vehicle that's down in there, it has to be expired a specific amount of time. So, our community service officer, what happens is if they find that issue, they mark it, they'll take photographs and they'll start watching when that registration passes the six-month mark. Once it reaches that point, then California law allows us to make that tow from that area. So, they just take time.
Gotcha. One more.
Gotcha, one more. Also, the parking areas for actual semis and things and rest areas, is that going to infringe their ability to park out there? I mean, with, you know, if there are people actually just looking to rest, it looks like that's a, I see some semis out there also, you know? I'm not sure if they've gone to Denmat or they're resting or coming somewhere over there.
Well, I think that would be for the city attorney to address.
Right.
But what we see right now in the city is that the semis typically park along the truck routes. So, A Street, Ocean Ave, I'm sorry, A Street, H Street and V Street, North and South, a portion of Laurel, Ocean Ave and Central are the truck routes for the city. And there are specific areas in there that they're allowed to park their vehicles in. So, in reference to what you're saying, technically, that is not a designated truck route. So, that would be something that would have to be addressed and looked at.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Just for council's awareness, based on Councilmember Vega's question, I have had conversations with casino management and while they don't currently have any issues, they are willing and interested in participating with the permit process and are just waiting to see what that looks like and will file to participate with it. So, they are aware and they are supportive of the program we're looking to put in place.
Any additional questions for staff before we open it for public comment?
Okay.
Seeing none, we'll open for public comment on this matter. Please step forward if you would like to speak to this issue.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Where will they go? What facilities do we have for people that can't afford a place to live? 60% of people in California can't afford housing. That's a government issue. What can you do to provide more affordable housing for people? What about mental health services, domestic violence? We have supposedly social service agencies and people that specialize in those things that could help individuals. I think this is more than a city council and police problem. I think we're paying for agencies to help these individuals and mental health is always a concern. The mental health services in California have a lot to be desired. So, I don't think we should just keep pushing them. Them is us. There but for the grace of God go I. And I think we need to approach it from that standpoint and consider them as people just like us. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and return discussion to council. Councilmember Mosby.
I know staff's spent a lot of time putting this together and I know this is part of a first step of a next movement to answer the question the public commenter just brought through. As far as social service components, mental health, that's county, has a lot of money that they use towards that. What we're trying to do is not turn a blind eye to what's going on and I think this is a small step to feel what's going on and I imagine that the police support could come back periodically and fill us in and tell us what's going on. I'm sure that'll happen as well. I am concerned about the shall component in here because we're saying we're not going to charge, but if there's a shall component, a lot of times, things happen to happen and I would be in support of this if that shall component was moved out of there for the charging component of the parking permit.
I'll support that.
So, we've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Starbuck. No? Turn the light off? Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Since Councilmember Mosby's motion was to remove the shall sentence in the ordinance, that's Section 2B of the ordinance, I would also recommend that in the resolution that creates the permit parking program, there is a few words in Section 2 that says, upon payment of the fee set by the city council, I would recommend that we strike those words too.
Councilmember Mosby.
I would adjust my motion with the city attorney's suggestions.
And I'll second that also.
Councilmember Vega seconds that. Any additional discussion on the motion?
Oh, on the motion? Question.
And that's the time, so.
Okay. Councilman Mosby, you mentioned going, moving forward down the path as we look ahead. This is going to solve a needed part of the parking program, but it looks like we're leaning toward permit parking as in the resolution throughout the whole city and possibly a ban on any overnight parking. And I remember that it was brought up once before about the Santa Barbara parking program and overnight unabanded. It was brought up and it didn't pass, you know, it did not move forward before. So, I think that's probably one direction because you asked about where are we going with this. We should at least reference it and so noted. I think aviation in Cordoba are probably a necessary element of allowing the law enforcement to keep the areas clean, but I wanted to just note that.
So noted. I don't believe it changes the motion on the floor. So, if there's no other discussion or questions, we can move to vote. Please vote. And that passes 5-0. Madam clerk, do we have any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay. Oral communications. This is the final chance to speak on city matters for two minutes. If anyone would like to come forward, we will open the floor for oral comments. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that and turn to council requests, comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
I attended the, I believe it was SB CAG meeting representing the city, but I do have a comment, a council request to make, and that's one about the appeals process that we have in the city. And we have many appeals processes in different ways and if people believe that there's an issue going on, whether it's with the fire code, whether it's with building code, whether it's with the plumbing code, sewer code, whatever we have, we have a lot of different appeals components. And Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo has directly assigned appeals boards. Currently, under the Building and Use Code, the California Code, the council becomes the appeals board because we don't have a design board. And I think it'd be important and prudent for us to get a staff presentation on the multiple layers of appeals that are out there. I know the public, I was finding it interesting to find out a number of contractors didn't understand that we have a number of appeals processes already in the program. So, I'd like to make a council request, the staff comes back with a presentation on the many levels of appeals that are out there and also with some potential action. Either we keep ourselves as an appeals board or we might be looking into, and maybe the staff could come back and show what the appeals process is on other communities like Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo where they have appeals board which consists of contractors and such so people can have an opportunity, so.
Councilmember Mosby?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, are you asking only for the options for building code, plumbing code, fire code appeals or are you also asking for other kinds of appeals like zoning code appeals?
Well, we do have an answer to that, but it'd be good for staff to recognize and show us that we do have a board already there because that's, planning is with our planning commission, correct?
Planning commission is the first level and then ultimately to the council.
Right. But I think a full level discussion, I think it's important for the public to understand that there are outlets and opportunities and if they are willing to accept what has been presented to them, they can, but understand that there are options. So, I think the multiple levels of appeals that we have, there's some out there that I haven't even found yet.
Real quick, so also, and I don't, I have to admit, still haven't memorized everything, but appeals also for utility payments or other types of things or more from the developmental, community development type of side? Because that could open up.
You know what? I think it would be prudent in the sake of transparency and otherwise, even that, I don't think it needs to be lengthy on that, but there is a component that we have there.
Could it come up with, anything that we think we can come up with that might have the appeal process built?
And again, it's the sake of letting it out for a lot of the people to understand. I do get a number of people who comment and come to me and say, well, how do I do this? And I try to give them a phone number where to go. It might be the wrong number, but it's the person when I need a question answered I go to. So, I would like the ability to make this a little bit easier for the people to get resolution. So, with that, I need a second or a third.
Councilmember Starbuck.
City attorney, would I recuse if I have a tenant that's actually in an appeal right now?
No, I don't think you need to recuse just to discuss what the city's appeals processes are.
I did want some potential, possible action for, no, we can stay off, just a presentation. Yeah, we can always make another one and bring it back for action.
That's correct.
Okay. So, just the presentation.
Needs a second?
He has the second from Council.
I'll have a third.
Councilmember Vega provided your third, so that council request is on the list.
And I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports, but I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Sean O'Neil and the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission. I did receive their annual report and a lot of work was done this year by that commission. I'd like to thank them. And by the way, I am looking for a beautification and appearance commissioner.
Good opportunity. Glad you took advantage of it. Councilmember Vega.
I have a council request from staff that we bring back for discussion and possible action, the process from which code enforcement is enforced in the way that people report infractions. So, I'd like us to bring that back for discussion and possible action so that we can see if there's any changes that the council would like to make.
So, the way someone besides staff does it or the way staff?
The way people apply for a complaint, the way complaints are taken by the city.
Okay. So, someone calling in?
I can be real specific, but I'm not sure how specific I can be.
No, I just want to make sure it's if someone outside is calling into the city to say, I have a complaint on.
I'd like us to refine the process, take a look at it because I think politically it's been taken out of context and in many cases, there's been reports that they think people aren't real. Well, let's take another look at it so that we can be more transparent, allow the public to make code enforcement, point out the issues, you know, and not that we want to put everybody's name out in the paper or anything, but at least make it as a part of a public record. So, if somebody wanted to make a public records request, everything's laid out on the table so it won't be abused politically.
I think we have a prior code enforcement complaint policy that the council adopted a number of years ago, so I just want to bring that back to see if any amendments might be in order and.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Being involved in this discussion numerous, numerous times, I have learned a lot in the last few months and I will give you a big second on that.
A third.
And you have your third. Any additional?
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks all here for being here.
Councilmember Cordoba.
I recently attended the AETC Command Civic Leaders Orientation or Meeting that was held at Randolph Air Force Base. I will be representing Vandenberg Air Force Base 381st Training Squadron as a civic leader and it was very eye-opening to be able to see the direction that the Air Force is taking in their, in their program to create resilience for the future, for the pilot system that they have going on through the Air Force and how that affects all the bases and how that also would affect Vandenberg Air Force Base and all the possibilities that there are there as well as provide support, leadership and maybe a liaison, I guess, if you will, for those programs and how they affect our community and how we as community members can support Air Force bases and especially our Air Force Base here at Vandenberg.
Thank you. I attended the Countywide City Selection Committee for a local appointment to LAFCO representation and while no council member from Lompoc was appointed to it, I do feel that the appointment and alternate are adequate voices for Lompoc and I will continue to attend those meetings and advocate for our local needs anytime those meetings occur. I went to the Lompoc Youth Conference put on by our youth commission on Monday. It was a great turnout and I really appreciate all the young people in our community engaging in learning how to be a part of the community and really broadening it. I think they had well over 100 students there that day, so it was really exciting knowing they could have sat at home and had the day off, but they were really taking initiative. I went to the Girls Softball League Open Ceremony. Unfortunately, the Little League's Open Ceremony is this coming Saturday, the same day that we have our budget workshop, so I will apologize for us not being able to make that. Several of us were at the CHC groundbreaking ceremony and really excited about the fact that the CHC facility is going to be moving forward and providing much-needed, not only regular health care that we've come to expect them to do, but they are also providing a large boost in dental services and mental health, two areas that we are lacking local services in. Many people have to travel to Santa Maria or Santa Barbara for those services right now. So, that was really good to hear. The community should know that the 2020 Census is beginning to take applications to participate and hire individuals for the census. That is a job that pays $20 to $22 an hour and you can go to 2020census.gov/jobs to make an application and they will begin training shortly. There is also, CHC Cares is a program that's providing educational meetings on mental health. They have begun the meetings in Spanish. They are weekly and they're held at the Lompoc Gardens Apartments at 304 West College and they meet at 3:00 PM on Wednesdays. Currently, it's all in Spanish, but if there's a large enough appeal for an English presentation, you can make that request and you can contact Naomi Velazquez at 805-458-4247 to participate in those. I think it's really important that those two bits of information get out to the public, especially one being paying jobs for an important job that really reflects those local nonprofits and the local government's ability to get federal funding and after the 2020 Census is done. Finally, given the recent upticks in local issues with our public safety and last night's incidents, I've had discussions with our new chief, Mariani, and he and I are working on a mayor's forum sometime at the end of this month. We will likely have it at the Dewey Center and make sure that it is in a bilingual format and have a discussion about citizens' concerns, opportunities to get involved, opportunities to volunteer, form neighborhood watches, those kinds of things. So, as we finish formulating the date and the time for that, I will make sure the community is aware of it and encourage you to attend. And last but not least, definitely come out on Saturday here at City Hall at 8:30 for the Budget Priority Workshop. It's really, really important for the public to participate in those discussions because it is you we represent, but we need to hear from you instead of making those decisions in a vacuum. So, I look forward to seeing all of you there and encourage all of your friends and family that live in town and are concerned about issues to come out and participate on Saturday. Thank you again for caring for each other, for being the kind of supportive community that will rise to these challenges we're having and be supportive of the loss that we. we recently have and try and prevent future losses. We'll adjourn this meeting to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on March 19th. Thank you.